All right, we'll go ahead and get started. If you guys will rise with me, we'll do the pledge of allegiance and Mr. Powell will lead us in the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Father, thank you so much for this day, the beautiful day that you've given to us. And I just ask, Lord, you will bless us tonight on decisions that need to be made for the city. I pray, Lord, you'll give us wisdom and guidance. Thank you for our leaders, thank you for our city leaders, thank you for our state leaders and our federal leaders, Lord, and just bless them. Thank you, Lord, for your goodness on us, in Jesus's name, amen.
Thank you, guys, for all joining us. I will call this May 2nd, 2017, Planning Commission Meeting to Order. And just a couple of quick announcements here. First, hats off to the Public Works Department as far as the work that they do, especially this past weekend. Very tough situation. From my understanding, I think we're unofficial at about 10 and 1/2 inches as far as what we had as far as in the northern portion of Springdale, so that nothing has seen that type of water. So, thank you to all those that are in the Public Works Department. I did want to also call out, some of you all might be here for some of the items that are either withdrawn or tabled on here. So, we do have one item in the conditional use, C-17-03, Rousch Coleman Homes, 7601, Bridgegate Avenue, Use Unit 34, in SF2 District. That's been withdrawn per the applicant. We will not hear that this evening. The second item is on rezoning, R-17-19, John Bacchus, 2126 Maestry Roads, from A1 to C2. That has been tabled per the applicant. So, basically what that means is, is that we won't hear from that applicant this evening. They can come back next month without having to go through the whole process again with that whole piece. But I just wanted to make sure if you are here for that, that has been tabled. There is the option that we can hear as far as from adjacent property owners, but know that the applicant is not present as far as for that whole piece. Okay? All right. So, if we can do roll call.
Gary Compton.
Roy Covert.
Here.
Vivian Haney.
Here.
Shannon Mueller.
Peyton Parker.
Here.
Kevin Parsley.
Here.
Aaron Panato.
Here.
Brian Powell.
Here.
Dale Tyler.
Here.
All right. Any questions of the minutes for April 4th?
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion by Ms. Haney?
Second.
Second by Mr. Covert. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next item, public hearing, motion, I'm sorry, proposed street name change per Chapter 110, Articles 6, changing 56th Street to Jean George Boulevard, presented by Patsy Christie.
I think the mayor really wants to address this first, so.
Great. I'll start. Thank you for this opportunity. We have, I, along with probably other city staff and the George family, have been discussing this possibility really for a long time. I believe the timing is right now, and the timing is, the George family is certainly okay with the timing, and as quickly as we're going to be seeing 56th Street begin to develop now, rather than doing this at a later time when there's more businesses to change addresses, more things that this would affect, I think this is the proper time to do this. It's certainly appropriate, in my mind, from the standpoint of the George family and Mr. Jean George. There are probably several in this room who knew Jean, or at the very least, knew who he was, and I'll tell you, he was a tremendous supporter of this city. And many of the things that we see in this city would not have been possible without the generosity of the George family. The George family's probably given well over a million dollars' worth of right-of-way to road projects in this city to help our citizens. It's no secret that children's, the improvements to 56th Street that were made with our 2012 bond issue probably could not have happened without those, that donation of right-of-way by the George family. Also, the Children's Hospital. I guess the argument could be made it wouldn't be happening without the improvements to 56th Street, but it certainly also wouldn't be happening without the generous donation of property by the George family. So, this is a fitting tribute to Jean, who was such a wonderful community partner and a great business owner for all of his life here in Springdale. I hope, honestly, I can tell you that we've talked with several people, and I have not gotten one bit of pushback on this, didn't really expect to, but I have not gotten one bit of negative. I think this is very appropriate, and quite honestly, the least we can do to, for, to attribute not only to Jean George and his legacy, but also to the family that has meant so much to this community. Put that aside, I think it'll be pretty cool to have a roundabout at Jean George and Don Tyson. And we also, you know, now, and Patsy and I have talked about this a little bit, and I want to be sure I'm thinking right on this, and this would rename the improved portions of 56th Street. It would be Jean George Boulevard, and so the Boulevard portions, the improved, the four-lane portions would be renamed at this time, or whenever, if this is approved by you and then the council. And then, as we do improvements in the future, as we move north to Elm Springs and beyond, Elm Springs Road and beyond, as we move south to Johnson, then the improved portions would also become Jean George Boulevard, in case that was a question in anyone's mind. That's the way I understand it. Patsy, am I understanding that right, that we could word this in that way? I mean, I don't know. I don't think the current 56th Street needs to be renamed where it's not been improved.
No, where it's not been improved.
They have more residences on them. We'll just improve those as we do, or we'll just rename those portions as we improve them in the future.
The problem's gonna be for 911, if anything has a 56th Street address, it needs to be changed to Jean George Boulevard. But how many of those actually front out on to?
Not many, on the part that's already improved. Not many.
That's where you get into an issue when.
Do we have, there's Dwayne Miller right there, our fire marshal.
It's where you get into a 911 issue, if part of it's called 56th Street, part of it's called Jean George Boulevard, 911 will be confused, and anything that's on there needs to change all at the same time, but we can work out those details.
Yeah, we'll work out those details. Heading north, it's not connected yet.
Right.
So, 56th Street would be way out to the north.
Yeah, when we make the connection from there to Elm Springs Road, then we could change that portion, if that's the way you want to do it.
As we improve it, the improved portions will become Jean George Boulevard. That would be my intention.
So, we're really just changing for now from Blue Avenue south to?
From Blue to Don Tyson.
Well, and not the portion from Don Tyson south until we actually.
Right, from Blue to Don Tyson.
So, we need to make sure that.
Anything south of the roundabout at Don Tyson would be renamed when that portion is improved, and it's actually under, it's actually designed, being designed right now.
So, the resolution just needs to say that as we move forward. I don't know that the resolution's been drafted yet.
Right. Okay. Anyway, I'll be here for questions, or if you have other comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Patsy, do you have anything else on that? Okay. Any questions or comments from the audience? Okay, it's to the commission. Let's be a motion.
Second.
This is to forward to council with recommendation for approval for the portion from Blue Avenue to Don Tyson Parkway.
I have a motion by Mr. Covert, and a second by Mrs. Haney.
Compton.
Yes.
Covert.
Yes.
Haney.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Parsley.
Yes.
Panato.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes. Motion passes eight zero.
Thank you. One quick question, Mr. Chairman. If we, as long as, as long as we've worded the resolution properly, then we won't need to come back and do this for each, each time a section is completed.
You're gonna have to ask her to stop, because I think that's a legal question. I don't know if it can be set.
Okay.
For the other pieces, we'll have to.
What do you think, Sarah?
Probably have to research that, if we've never done that before.
No, I think, I think that you're gonna have to re-notify on that, but we can cross that bridge whenever we reach it.
Okay, wasn't the answer I wanted, but that's okay. So, well, thank you. And Patsy, will that be at the next council meeting, or the last council meeting?
Well, which one do you want it at?
I'd just soon go ahead and do it at the next one, if, if we can do that. Is that all right?
I don't know.
We'll see if we can get it to.
She didn't want to answer wrong again. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next section, tabled items. First item, L-17-15, metal roofing, sales 2871 and 2919, Highway 412 East, concept of detention presented by Bates and Associates.
Hello, Dave Burris, Burris Architecture, Architect of Record, and Bates and Associates, Civil Engineer.
Staff comments?
Okay. All comments from the utility companies and other city departments must be addressed prior to approval of construction plans. The development must comply with the City of Springdale Commercial Design Standards or variances required. Now, when did you submit the elevations for the building? They didn't come back with a resubmission package? They come in later?
I'm sorry?
We submitted those on the 19th of April.
Some of the comments, okay, I'm gonna read the comments that we have, and we still have to address some of those. Provide at least two of the items listed under the central features and community spaces in the Springdale Commercial Design Standards. A metal trash can receptacle does not meet the intent of the Community Features Section, provide an additional feature. Okay? Outdoor storage trash collection in loading areas must be as landscaped so that the functions are fully contained and out of view of the adjacent property in their public right-of-way. Building facade shall include a repeating pattern with no less than three of the following color change, texture change, material modular change, expressions of architectural or structural base through a change in plane no less than 12 inches in width, such as offset, reveal, or projecting rib, at least one element must repeat horizontally, and no element shall repeat at intervals of greater than 30 horizontal or vertically. Have you provided that kind of a relief?
So.
Because we don't show it on the plans, and you indicate.
Are you saying the color elevations are not a part of this metal?
Well, does the building facade actually meet that requirement?
It does have a repeating pattern. It expresses structural base systems in there with pilasters on both sides. It does have metal panel on the east-west in the back with 100% of an improved material, of a stone material, if you will. The projections do go beyond, it's not 12 inches beyond, it's something more like 6 inches beyond by the time it's all said and done. This is a pre-engineered metal building, but efforts were made to try to improve materials and create rhythm along the sides in an, obviously in an area that, bring the picture, in an area that doesn't have any, anything, so we're.
Okay, did you apply for a variance then to address those that doesn't meet, I mean, if you don't have it says, through a change in plane no less than 12 inches, if you only have six, that's not 12. So, did you apply for a variance?
No, ma'am.
Okay, so you may have to come back and do that. Chain link with privacy slides is not a permitted screening method, please revise the dumpster enclosure. Did you make that change?
We will make that change to composite decking to match the color of the building.
Okay, and so, what is the predominant exterior material?
Both metal and stone, manufactured stone.
What percentage of the building is stone, and what percentage is metal? Can you tell me that?
Let's see, on each facade, broken out, we are 100% of exterior stone veneer on the north facade, we are 100% of metal material on the rear or the south facade, we are 42% stone veneer on the west, and 47% on the east. Again, do they not have these?
I don't know, on the 19th.
They've been submitted, I guess, on the 19th.
Do you get those in your drawings?
No, I didn't see them in the packet at all.
Did they come electronically?
But, I'm sorry.
Elevations?
I don't think so.
Have they been electronically?
I can get those to you, I thought they were in there.
Okay.
Might want to pass that around, just so that.
And what, what kind of a fence or a wall do you have? Maximum height of a fence or wall shall be eight feet, constructive high-quality materials such as decorative blocks, brick, stone, cypress, cedar, redwood, and/or wrought iron. The maximum length of a continuous unbroken is, shall be 50 feet, breaks shall be provided with use of columns, landscaping pockets. Do you have that in the fencing?
It is, it's six-foot fence.
Can you speak into that mic for me? Sorry.
Six-foot fence, cedar.
Okay, is that shown on the plan?
It is in the details.
Well, when you, when you put in your comments, it says, "We'll show projections and a recesses with architectural plans," and we didn't get those until later. Submit a unified lighting plan per Springdale Commercial Design Standards. I don't think the lighting plan that we received meets the city's requirements.
Have a one-foot candle from the photometrics.
Who submitted the lighting plan?
You submitted that?
Yeah, I went through Lee Pennington, he did that, but we can go back and fix that.
Those are the issues that we still have.
Is that it?
Um, concept of detention must be approved by the planning commission.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the audience? It's to the commission.
I have some concerns with bringing it to the table like this, where we don't have really a chance to look at it, and wondering if that's something that needs to be tabled.
That's one of the challenges, this is already a tabled item, and it had to be completely resubmitted at this point. Is that correct?
It has been tabled once, all right.
I share your, I share your concerns as well.
You know, we're glancing at it.
Right.
30 seconds as it passes by right now, and have not had a chance to really look at it, and neither has the department.
Mm-hmm.
The planning department.
Is the process, Mr. Chairman, for them to resubmit, what is that, what's the impact on the client?
It's a, they'll have to start over.
Well, they'll just resubmit, and we'll go through the process and make sure. You didn't apply for any variances for anything that didn't make the city's standards?
We did not apply for a variance yet, I'm Jeff Bates, because he has not closed on the property yet, so once he closes on the property, then we'll come back and apply for a variance unless, or we will meet all of these requirements. We brought a CD up here that had the elevations on it, and I want to say we brought four paper copies too, but.
Is there an opportunity to approve them at this level with the planning commission, with the understanding that it'll be held before council gets to see it until these items are met?
Council doesn't see it.
Okay.
I mean, the plans can't be approved unless you either give them a variance, or they have met all these. So, if you approve it subject to these comments, and if they don't make the changes, it can't be approved till they come back and apply for a variance. We can do that.
And that's what we'd ask they'll do, just to prove it, and we either have to meet all these, or come back later with a variance.
And then, with a variance request, they'll have to show those drawings to see if, approve of those percentages of material that's, that's not, I mean, a metal building, we don't do metal buildings. And so, you have to determine whether the percentage of stone they put on there is acceptable enough to do it or not. So, they could have to come back and ask for a variance for that.
So, there was that variance, but then there was also the variance to the lighting plan too, correct?
Right, and, and I can't address what the problems were with the lighting plan, but.
What it looked like from the comments was there wasn't, we weren't lighting the sidewalk going up to the street. I think we're lighting the parking lot in the building, but I guess there's pedestrian access up to 412 that wasn't getting enough light on it. It's kind of the way it read to me.
Well, I know, is it, it says, your comment back said the plans were sent to Lee Pennington, and that doesn't tell me anything. Was he, was he expected to meet all the city's requirements?
What was her question?
Is that what that means?
What was your?
The red comment back says, "Plan sent to Lee Pennington." I'm not sure what that means.
Oh, that was a lighting company who was doing the design of the.
Okay, so they were responsible for.
Yes, and they had the city codes, and according to him, we met it, but.
So, I share your concern about negotiating it at the table while we're voting on at
the same time. Is there anything in the commission's mind that you're concerned about this building other than the two variances being met? Is there any structural issues that cause you concern for, for holding this over?
There aren't any structural issues. The issue is we get into commercial design standards and what the buildings look like.
That's what I'm talking about. I'm talking about the structure itself. Is there anything about you that, about it that concerns you enough to hold it up?
No, other than, you know, is the percentages of stone enough to meet the design standards? Because it doesn't meet the design standards.
Well, if you approve it, we have to meet the design standards.
Yeah, I understand. I think the concern is that that should have been done and put to bed before we got here, obviously.
We submitted it two weeks ago, so I don't know what happened to it.
So, we can go ahead and vote on this, and just note that there is a potential as far as two variances that will have to be brought back to us. One potentially as far as on the lighting plan, and the other as far as the percentage as far as the stone structure on the outside, or breaks as far as within that as well. Are you all good with that?
So, just raising up the stone.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You guys good with that as well? Okay. So, we would do the concept of detention first, and then.
Call for the vote on the concept of detention.
Okay, call for the vote on the concept of detention by Mr. Powell.
Covert.
Yes.
Haney.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Parsley.
Yes.
Panato.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Concept of detention passes eight zero, and for the large scale, need a motion.
Motion subject to staff comments on the waivers being corrected before it moves forward.
Motion by Mr. Covert.
Second.
Second by Mr. Powell.
Haney.
No.
Parker.
Yes.
Parsley.
Yes.
Panato.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Covert.
Yes.
Thank you, sorry for the confusion.
I was suggesting the future, when you address the comments, when you say, "Okay" on your written comments, that you tell us where it's been cited on the plans, because then we know you carried all the way through. When it just says, "Okay," it really doesn't tell us anything.
Thank you all. Next tabled item, R-17-12, First Security Bank, southeast corner of East Robinson and Oriole, from C2 to MF16. Also a variance, two variances, B-17-23, variance for reduction of parking spaces from 126 to 100, variance for modification of multifamily design standards for reduction of open space from 20% to 10%, and then, large-scale, 17-10, Oriole, Oriole Street. Presented by ESI.
First, the, you know, they presented to the work session the other night, the actual percentage of open space reduction is from 20% to 17%.
17, yes.
Right, okay, and there was no change in the, in the number of parking spaces from 126 to 100. That, getting the additional extra open space was because they rearranged the buildings so that the spaces between the buildings could be counted as part of the overspace, open space, eliminated one of the drives. So, that's how we were able to accomplish that extra. And then you got to see the design of the, of the structures and the type of materials that we're gonna use and the percentages as presented to the meeting, at the meeting the other night.
So, so that's being changed to 17% now?
Right, from 20% to 17%. Right.
The current plan shows the 17%.
And the parking spots were not mentioned in the work session?
I don't remember us discussing the reduction in parking spaces from 126 to 100, but it may be because I knew that was.
I mentioned it, I don't know if everybody.
Yeah, I believe we did discuss it.
Basically, we've got two per unit is where we got the 100 from, so that's what we're, we're asking the variance for.
Any other comments?
Let me see, first, we're doing the rezoning. I need to read the comments for the rezoning. All these things together, it gets kind of confusing. The Combris of Land use plan indicates commercial use. The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals. Policies of the Combris of Land use plans recommended for approval protect the positive aspects of neighborhood character throughout the city. Appropriate locations for single-family and multifamily residential development should be provided based on accessibility, site suitability, utility availability, neighborhood compatibility, and environmental factors. Multifamily housing should be developed at a density in-site scale that is compatible with the surrounding neighborhoods and available utilities and roadway capacity. The units that are allowed on the other side are allowed in a C2 zone, so we changed that, and you can't put those in a C2 zone anymore, so.
Okay. Anything else? Any questions or comments from the audience?
Okay, first, we need to do the rezoning. Call for the vote on.
Call for vote for rezoning by Ms. Haney.
Parker.
Yes.
Parsley.
Yes.
Panato.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Covert.
Yes.
Haney.
Yes.
Rezoning passes eight zero.
Staff will prepare the ordinance, it goes to council on the 23rd.
And variances?
Take both.
Take both variances together. Call for the vote?
Call for the vote.
Call for vote by Mr. Powell.
Yes.
Panato.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Covert.
Yes.
Haney.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Variances pass eight zero, and large-scale motion.
Let me see, we haven't read any of the comments. Screening fences required in accordance with Chapter 56, show the trees associated with the screen. We've already addressed the open space, the parking we've already addressed. There's no variances in the building. Did you submit a lighting plan?
No, we did not.
Okay, we need a lighting plan.
We talked about as far as on that fence, potentially doing something different as far as the green space between the two.
Right, so, we, on our landscape plan, we have shown that existing canopy, and we put a note on there, contractor to preserve existing tree canopy on the existing property line where capable, and then if we can't keep that, we'll replace that canopy with a screen tree.
What I was referring to is instead of just putting a complete fence all the way down through there, I mean, how we could actually leverage as far as using that green space for both sides on that, which, I don't know if any, if everyone else shares that same, or do we want to truly separate those?
Yeah, we were, they were trying to keep people from going, from back and forth from one apartment.
Driving.
Driving, for sure, but not walking.
Is there a fence there now?
We're okay, no, there's no fence, it does, neither, neither walking, it doesn't matter.
Is there a fence there?
an area that both sides could use. I mean, if there was, you know, picnic tables and things like that. Because that's a lot of green space in there, so. But I don't know what y'all's thoughts are on this.
For him to drop in a couple picnic tables with the money he saves from not putting the fence up?
I think there's an existing privacy fence from the-
On the other side.
On the other side of the property line for the other other property, so.
Okay. Then just leave it alone then, so.
The other issue is the signs. Are you putting a monument sign in the front? I don't think it shows that on your plan. Do you have a sign? Is it, it can't exceed five feet in height above the average grade and may not exceed fifty square feet in area per face, not sitting within the landscape setback. The sign base shall be located within a curved landscaped area extending a minimum of three feet on all sides of the sign base. Pole-boundous signs shall not exceed twelve feet in height and ten square feet per face. So, you'll meet one of those conditions, okay? Section one oh seven, the area, the side area of disturbance is greater than one acre. A stormwater pollution prevention plan grading permit application, five hundred dollar fee, in accordance with chapter one oh seven, must be submitted to the planning office prior to final approval of construction plans. We do not approve the use of waddles for curb inlets or graded curb inlet protection. Therefore, a note needs to be added that a wattle and/or hay bales will not be used in lieu of sandbags. Red filter, big red filter or an approved equal.
We've made a complete change on our plan to show the big red filter as in the protection, so.
That's it.
Okay. Be a motion?
I just have one question.
Sure.
That's been coming up a lot on the changes with this waddle curb. Is that something that you're-
We've, we've made that change.
I mean, it's been coming on plans over and over again lately.
I think there might have been a change in direction from ADQ or some other entity that basically said that our waddles weren't acceptable as inlet protection. We were showing just a straw waddle in place of like a silk fence, or this, this red filter has basically, it's a, it's a mesh filter full of rocks instead of full of straw.
I think it's a new best management practice that's being used in the region for stormwater protection rather than the waddles that we had in-
Okay.
Because they tend to blow out a little bit.
So, it's a heavier-
Yeah, this is a heavier, better screening for stormwater protection is really what all this comes about. And I think the region as a whole has kind of looked at going to the standard, and so we're going to that standard as well.
So eventually, the engineering firms will catch up?
We'll, we'll quit, we'll quit saying that in a few months when everybody's got to the point where they quit putting it on there.
Okay.
And all habits are hard to break.
Okay, that's fine. So this is a motion then?
It is.
I'll make a motion, subject to staff comments, and with the change on the-
Okay.
Subject to staff comments, right.
Subject to staff comments.
Okay.
Motion by Mrs. Haney?
Second.
Second by Mr. Covert?
Panado?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Large scale passes eight zero?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, B seventeen dash twenty-one, AutoZone, nineteen forty-five Butterfield Coach Road, variance modification of commercial design standards, presented by Jeff Karts.
Hi there. I'm, uh, should I start? This is, I haven't been to any variance meetings before, so. Anyway, my name is Jeff Kowers. I'm with AutoZone. Basically, the design standard we're asking relief for is the entrance doors off of, if you're on corner or two streets because of our site design, site layout, and the property here. It really doesn't make much sense to have one off, I believe it's Robinsonville Road. There's a lot of topography there, even if there was pedestrian access. So that, that's basically the reason we're asking for the variance.
We have done similar variances in other locations when we're on this kind of area.
Okay. Any other staff comments? That's it.
I don't have any other comments.
Okay. Any questions or comments in the audience? To the commission?
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote by Mr. Powell?
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Panado?
Yes.
Variance passes eight zero?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, B seventeen dash eighteen, Aliana LLC, southwest corner of Wagon Wheel Road and I forty-nine, variance deletion of paving requirements, presented by Mike Fagan.
Hello? I don't know if I need, how much I need to re-present, but basically asking not to have to pave the whole drive and primarily due to the location being pretty industrial, light industrial, the the fact that we have trucks that come and turn around there. And the delivery vehicles that come through there, I'm concerned about the weight on that, but let me add, and I did meet with Patsy and gave her some drawings. She had asked me for kind of a breakdown inside the buildings, how much was warehouse, how much was retail and so forth, but today actually had a company come and they paved the parking for the rest of the building and also paved and improved the south entrance. So, and he will be coming back and striping. He said he's got to wait a period of time, you know, let the oils come up or something. So, you know, I, you know, that's pretty much, I'm still, I still feel the same way that it's based on where we are, we're, we're not really in the city on Sunset somewhere with a lot of traffic. I don't have a lot of traffic in my business and I don't anticipate these people having a lot of walk-in traffic, so.
So you're paving the area in front of the building for parking?
Correct, it is paved now.
What's the depth of it from the edge of the building? Nineteen feet or?
The depth, it's Patsy, I'm not sure. It's whatever the we had a, half of it had a concrete pad and I'd given you those dimensions, but I'd failed to bring them with me tonight.
Okay, and then you said you had something done to the south drive?
The, I was having, it was more, you know, that needed, you know, if something needs to be paved, then then it's kind of self-evident on a place like this, but on the south entrance, just because it was slanted and when, when trucks would come and go and cars kind of bunched the gravel up, and so what he did was smoothed it and paved it, so it would eliminate that problem.
Just at the entrance, not connecting the parking lot to the to the drive, to the edge of the street?
Correct, because I wasn't going, you know, that's the whole purpose of this variance request.
Okay, so you really just paved the, like a section off of, off of Wagon Wheel Road to give a smooth surface to come off the road, and then you get on gravel and you don't get to pavement until you get in front of the building again?
Correct, correct.
And then there's nothing on the north side? From the edge of the paved parking, there's a gravel park, drive all the way up, back up to the street?
Back up to, within so many, probably twelve or fifteen feet from the edge, because that had a concrete-
Yeah, right.
-pad there.
You just have an approach off of the road for each of the driveways, but you don't have the driveways paved that are connected. That's what he's asking for.
Correct.
And you're asking for a waiver to allow it to stay that way?
Correct.
Anything else?
Scheduled, has that been done?
Yeah.
Scheduled to be paved?
Well, my, my primary request is not to have to pave. You know, there are other, as you go down Puppy Creek, there are other industrial-type buildings similar to mine that also kind of grandfathered in, and, you know, it's the same there. They have gravel for the main part, and then they have paving in front. You know, so that is my primary request.
Yeah, and I, last month, he was here as far as to request a complete variance. But we kind of got into a design discussion, and so we requested as far as should it be tabled. Since then, the improvements have been made as far as for the actual entrance and in front of the business as well, so.
Except for strip, except for striping, and you get it striped?
And he, yeah, he's going to strip it. And Patsy, what he, what I discussed was with him was because in front of the building, we don't have we have a finite amount of space for the drive because it drops off and goes down into the ravine. But, you know, because of that, we're going to design that to be kind of a one-way in, one-way out, as you suggested. And so he's going to angle the parking spaces, so you come in from the north and park, park angled.
Will that cause another variance that will be needed as far as the number of spaces and-
He hasn't increased the size of the building or anything like that, so.
But if you're striping things on there, I mean, it's you're going to have to have ADA requirements as far as-
Well, you're putting in one handicap space. One will be striped for a handicap space.
Absolutely can. And on the north end of the building, the, the pavement is level with the sidewalk, so I think it would be good for that.
So basically, the waiver is to have striped paved parking in front of the building. And it would have paved approaches on each of entrances onto Wagon Wheel Road. And then the driveways itself will not be paved. If there's not cars parked in front of the building, there, there will be a paved surface to drive on there, and if you don't have it parked full all the time. I mean, that's basically what the waiver's going to be, what the waiver's asking for. That makes sense?
Yeah, it will match the other businesses around it. They're, they're exactly like he said, they're what he's basically done to his property is basically what they have been done for years. It is some of the neatest properties I've seen in this town.
I mean, the, you know, but, but the old, older ones that are grandfathered in, at some point, these are the opportunities that we have to bring them into compliance. And we, we could do the two-year bill of assurance which you had talked about at one point.
But he's taking that off the top. You're not, you're not offering to do a two-year bill bill of assurance to pave any more of the driveways.
Plan B. I mean, I, I, you know, I just-
Your request is not to do it at this point?
Correct.
And he would only be required-
Correct, correct.
He would only be required to have paving on one side, right? Not both?
Well, the ordinance says if you use it as a drive, it's supposed to be paved. And we talked about the possibility of closing one of the drives off, and that doesn't work well for trucks coming in and out and that kind of stuff for his operation of his business, because we had that discussion too. Could we just close one of them? If you narrow it down to one way, then you really have to have both of them. So that you come in one, one end and go out the other is basically, and you're coming in on the north and going out on the south, so that's that's what we talked about.
Yeah, my, my main concern, you know, number one, that's been there for a long time. It's, it's very packed, it's very solid. And, and the other trap, you know, it, just the location there by the exit, we just have, I mean, when you look at Google Earth and you zoom in, you'll see a car or truck up on that north end. I just have a lot of unrelated traffic you know, that comes in there, and I have heavy trucks being right across from the quarry, so.
But the north end had some damage from the rain, right?
The north end did, well-
The north end had, because it's-
You know, we all did.
Not smooth.
Right, but, you know, what I've done in the past, if we had a heavy rain like this, I'll hire somebody with the tractor and they come in and grate it, and it holds. But on this one, when we had all that rain, and I knew the guy was coming to pave and could, could fix it, I mean, you know, this was a hundred-year flood.
Jim, did you have comments?
I did. The, first of all, I'm going to say that what he's done to this has made much, much improvements on what was out there. I've watched this area a lot. It is in my ward. I've seen it. I've actually done it. People will miss the turn on the I forty-nine, to get on the I forty-nine. And they'll turn those big trucks in his driveway. If he asphalt's up, they're just going to tear it up. Just going to tear it up. Him putting asphalt in front of that building and making parking, strike parking places and stuff, I think is much, much more improvement than what we've got in a lot of those businesses down here.
Thank you. Is there any other comments or questions from the audience? Okay, to the commission?
Call for the vote.
Call for vote by Mr. Covert?
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Panado?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Variance passes eight zero?
Thank you all.
Thank you. Appreciate your patience and also the, the work that you did do on that, so it did make a big difference on it, so I I just want to, I brought up as far as the striping just because I, I want you to be within legal as far as from an ADA piece, so you might want to work with them.
But you can just stripe one space as an, and a camp space, yeah.
Thank you. Next section, public hearing conditional use. First item again, C seventeen dash zero-three, Rousch-Coman Homes, has been withdrawn per applicant. Next item, C seventeen dash four, zero-four, Isabel Velquez, nine ninety West Sunset Avenue, use unit seventeen A, Inside Entertainment, and C two, presented by Jose Silvar.
Good afternoon. I'm here again. Hopefully this goes better this time.
This is our first time to use our new ordinance amendment to, to create a seventeen A so that he can provide karaoke at this location rather than rezoning it to C five. The ingress and egress to the property is acceptable. The off-street parking, they have quite a bit of parking. It's not really, he gave a sketch that shows this on there. It looks like it's acceptable. Refuge, refuge and service area is acceptable, utilities are acceptable, screening and buffering is acceptable. The sign, you're not making any changes to the existing sign, are you?
No.
Okay. The yard requirements are acceptable, the size and shape of the site is acceptable. There's no additional landscaping requirements that are added to this. So the overall acceptability of the project, it is generally compatible with the adjacent properties and other property in, in the general district. It should be limited to karaoke only with hours of operation from Sunday through Tuesday from eight AM to ten PM, Fridays from eight to twelve, eight AM to twelve PM, and Saturdays from eight AM to one AM. So you would be restricted to those times and it's karaoke only. Okay?
Any other comments? Okay, any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission?
Call for the vote.
And this needs to be a call for the vote with those conditions that I just listed.
Call for the vote with the conditions that Patsy listed.
Okay. Call for vote by Mrs. Haney?
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Panado?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Use passes eight zero?
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your patience with that. Next section, rezoning, R seventeen dash eighteen, Commercial Computer Services Incorporated, southwest corner of Fifty-six Streets and Deering Road from A one to C two, presented by Gene Housley.
I'm Gene Housley. I've got a little company called Commercial Computer Services, Inc. It's basically a real estate investment company. I acquired the property beside the property I already had that I'd zoned C two. I owned the property on the other side of the road and sold it, which is zone C two, requesting to zone this piece beside the one I already have zoned to, see, from A one to C two. And you know, it's certainly very compatible. It's already C two on both sides of me. And requesting to zone the one in the middle to C two also.
Staff comments?
The adopted comprehensive land use plan indicates commercial use for the area. The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies of the comprehensive land use plan is recommended for approval. Prove the city's economic base and tax structures to the promise, promotion of healthy, stable commercial concentrations, assure adequate land allocation for commercial areas of sufficient size and in proper locations, and encourage the development of a wide range of commercial development for the residents and tourists to include neighborhood, community, and regional centers.
Any questions or comments in the audience? To the commission?
Call for the vote.
Call for vote by Mrs. Haney?
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Panado?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Rezoning passes eight zero?
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Staff will prepare the ordinance, it goes to council on May the 23rd.
Next item again, was table per applicant. R-17-19 John Backus, 2126 Maestry Road. If there was any comments that anyone wanted to make on that, you're still welcome to, to make those. Just a reminder that the applicant is not here. Okay? So, the next item as far as rezoning, R-17-20 Point Royale Development Incorporated, 3300 Butterfield Coach Road, modification of ordinance for removal of rental rates to be less than comparable homes because of the use of tax credits through the Arkansas Development Finance Authority from the current planned unit development presented by Griffin Company Realtors.
Good evening, Greg Taylor, 2991 Willow Bend Circle, Springdale. And we're here tonight representing the property owner and requesting a modification to the ordinance to remove the tax credit.
You'll remember when we had, when we adopt a planned unit development for a piece of property, it comes with a development plan. And part one of the statements in this development strategy was this, that provided affordable housing in the form of three-bedroom, two-bath, two-story townhomes marked to moderate to middle-income working families, rental rates to be less than comparable homes because of the use of tax credits through the Arkansas Development Finance Authority. The original developer of this property was not able to receive those tax credits, and so the property is being sold to a different developer who will use the same types of development, the same, everything else stays the same, it just takes out that statement about using tax credits. And we wanted to make sure there was no confusion when we move forward with this as they started to use the property, that tax credits are not. And they don't have to be rental rate adjusted because of those tax credits, so.
Correct.
So, we're getting the same quality, the same kind of development, one management. We're talk, not talking about anything except taking that one statement out of it.
And this is where we had it as far as being a planned unit development helped us in this whole piece here.
Right, right. And it has all of the management conditions, it has garages, it has open area, it has all of those things, none of that changed.
Correct.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the audience? Just to the commission?
Call for the vote.
Greg, as, as you go forward, the last time this issue came to us, there were some concerns about Julio. It's a very narrow road, a lot of the traffic is kept off of that, especially larger vehicles. You might wanna be conscious of that as this moves forward, not only for parking happens, but also in the construction phase of this moving forward. That's a very, very narrow little road that connects up.
Yes.
Put a caution. Thanks.
Call for the vote by Mrs. Haney.
Hey, we got one comment here.
I'm sorry.
Bringing up, bringing up Julio, it's a very thin asphalt.
Can, if, I'm sorry, could, if you could state your name and address.
Oh, Stephen Fowler, 2646 Julio. Julio's a very thin asphalted road. Even the trash truck is already starting to tear it up, coming down and turning around. And we got a lot of traffic turning around in my yard, tearing up all my yard work. Comes down and just does a spin around. But that road never hur, hold good traffic or heavy trucks and stuff.
Will there, will there be accessibility on Julio, I couldn't remember as far as that or if it was on Butterfield.
There was gonna be two accesses off Julio, yes. If they're maintaining the same plan.
But I think the main access was off of Butterfield.
Right.
Okay. If you wanted, if you need to speak, I need you to come up to the mic, please.
We haven't changed anything as far as the layout that was approved or anything like that, or any of the conditions for, that was approved the last time.
Well, the first approval was a mistake as far as I'm concerned. The second section, they was building in two, the sections the first time. And the second section, the one to the west, the only access is off of Julio. It will not be accessed off of Butterfield Coach, according to their plans.
Okay, that has, none of that has changed, we're not changing-
So, all, okay.
Anything that's already been approved, other than this statement. The access points will stay the same, the types of, of structures, all that kind of issues will, will be the same as they were when the previous one.
Okay.
Uh, Greg, it includes improvements to your half the street of Julio Road.
None.
Whatever, whatever was approved stays the same.
Do they have a, a for, concerns like this, where, where would they take those? There's someplace that there's a, I know that there's a street, is there a street committee or there's something that they can, if-
You mean, the, the paving or the connection, the quality of Julio Road?
Yeah, right, is there just a forum for them to, you know, talk about their, you know, any issues that they might have, I mean, is there, because this may not be the-
Yeah, probably traffic.
Have you been to that, are you aware of Traffic Committee?
Haven't been there.
They meet, Melissa, yeah, first Wednesday of every month.
Right.
You can call my office and get on the agenda. And, uh, and they meet the first Wednesday of every month, which actually is tomorrow, isn't it?
So, you probably can't get on tomorrow.
Yeah, and it, and it's one, at, at 1:00, 1:00 p.m., upstairs in the multipurpose room, so. But if you'll call, they'll, yes, upstairs, upstairs down the hall from, from my office. So, if you'll call my office, then, uh, then Megan can direct you to the, Megan or Rose in my office, whoever answers the phone can direct you to get you, how to, how to get on the agenda for the next Traffic Committee.
I may have, can't call you, I don't have.
That'd be fine.
So, we're, we're not changing anything that was approved with the previous project. All the access points, all the style, all of the conditions that were set on it, the only thing we're taking out is that statement about tax credits, that's all that's changing.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? We have a call for a vote by Mrs. Haney.
Haney?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Panado?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Rezoning passes eight zero.
Staff will prepare the ordinance, it goes to council on the 23rd.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next section, preliminary plats, replats, and final plats. R- replat 17-06, replat Lot 8, West Side Village, Phase 2, northwest corner of West Side Village Street, presented by Crafton Toll.
Good evening, my name's Anthony Apple, I represent Crafton Toll, who is representing Town Park 412 LLC, and requesting a replat of this property to separate it into separate lots, Lot A, 8A, and Lot 8B. Lot 8A is currently being developed as Town Park Apartments.
And it was, that project was approved with the idea that this was gonna be a separate lot and not be included, and we're going through the process of creating that actual lot split, or replating it, is basically what we're doing.
Any other staff comments?
All comments from the utility companies and other city departments must be addressed prior to approval.
Yes, ma'am.
Hey, Jim? Jim? I was gonna say, if y'all, if y'all need to talk about that, okay, thank you. Uh, any comments or questions from the audience? Okay, just to the commission? Motion subject, staff comments?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Covert, second by Mrs. Haney.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Panado?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Replat passes eight zero.
If you want this to go to council next Tuesday evening, the ordinance needs to be in the mayor's office by Thursday at noon.
By Thursday noon? Okay, very good, thank you. Uh, at that, pardon me, I'm sorry. At that time, will these be? Yes, ma'am.
Give it to Debbie and she'll take care of it.
All right, next item, R- replat 17-08, replat of Lot 1A, 2B, dash 2B, Harbor Meadows. Plan use development, Phase 23, northeast corner of Founder's Park and Sunset, presented by ESI.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Jason Apple with ESI. I'll answer any questions?
Staff comments?
Need locations and sizes of all utilities, including storm sewer. All comments from the utility companies and other city departments must be addressed prior to approval.
Any questions or comments in the audience? Just to the commission? Be a motion?
Motion to approve, subject to staff comments.
Motion by Mrs. Haney?
Second.
Second by Mr. Covert.
Parsley?
Yes.
Panado?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Replat passes eight zero?
Thank you.
Thanks. Next section, large-scale developments. Large-scale 17-16 Commercial Retail Center, Tacos for Life, directly east of Buffalo Wild Wings, north, uh, north side of Sunset Avenue, Concept of Detention, presented by Luke McCartney.
Hello, Luke McCartney, representing Nick's McCartney Construction and JRN Investments, which is the property owner.
Great. Staff comments?
Okay, did you submit building elevations?
I, I submitted building elevations, we have, they're submitted with it, they were submitted with the Tacos for Life proposal, uh, with the permit. Now, the building elevations for the-
With the permit for what?
Uh, for the Tacos for Life, um, submitted the building elevations when they submitted for their permit for construction. We haven't, they, they probably have those, I can get those immediately.
Well, we haven't seen them, I mean, your, your comment says that the comments were acknowledged, but that doesn't tell me how you acknowledged them. Did they come to, did you get elevations, Mike?
Yeah, we, we've sent, we've sent, uh, we've sent several separate sets, um...
Okay, that, therein lies the problem, because we don't have a set of building elevations, so we haven't looked for, looked at them for-
We, we got the, the plans for the building before we got the large scale.
And the plans went to you guys to get a building permit before we got the large scale?
We had Taco for Life a month ago, something like that, and then-
They submitted that, the Tacos for Life group submitted the plans for their build-out before the shell, before the large-scale development was submitted, before we knew it was gonna be-
The shell roughly the same time we got the, uh, the requirements for the large scale.
So, so no one has reviewed them to see if the building actually meets the commercial design standards, because you guys don't do that, right?
It's a very nice looking building.
We're not gonna argue that it's not a nice-looking building, it's just that we, when, when you submitted, I assume you did the responses to the questions, to the comments?
Our architects and our engineer did the response to the questions. He, I have a, I'll, I'll have to check the email, but I know that he had sent me, he CC'd me on the email where he'd sent the elevations.
Okay, I don't know what to tell you, because we haven't seen them. So, I can't tell you if it meets commercial design standards or not, because when I get a letter back that says it's acknowledged, that doesn't tell me anything. And all of the comments, 1 through 22, says acknowledged, whatever that means.
Is there a way, and I, this is the first I've, I hadn't looked at this at all, uh, either, is there a way that, what are, what are we being asked to approve tonight, the large scale?
Yeah, so they can get their permit to start, and we don't know if the building meets-
Are the design standards the only question?
Uh, let me see, what else we got?
I know sometimes we pass large scales subject to addressing certain items. That's a pretty big item to-
This is a pretty big item.
To address, and I didn't know if that would be something the commission would be willing to look at.
We need to show the legal description of the property, the streetlights are required at each intersection, all comments for utility companies must be addressed prior to approval of construction plans, comply with the City's brand of commercial design standards. They didn't apply for a variance, so I don't, I don't know what they are.
They would have to come back and do that if, if, if they wanted to?
There's 22 items that needed to be addressed. Uh, submit a preliminary drainage report, no drainage report was found as noted in response to the comments.
That was submitted on the 19th or the 13th, I believe, and I also have a copy of that.
Okay, I, I'm reading you what the engineers have.
And I'd like to make a note about the drainage report for this. Um, the drainage is being handled because when Harbor Meadows subdivision was developed, they accounted for this lot to be fully developed in their detention, that's why detention won't actually be required for this site.
I'm just reading your comments, so we can take that off of there, right?
Yes.
So, no, no concept of detention in any-
All right, okay.
I only, I only get up here, I don't get up here much. Uh, but, and I don't know, I don't, I have no idea on the time, uh, line and how, how important it is to move forward now. I only offer that as a suggestion if the, if the, if that is, if the time is an issue, that if the commission would be willing to, to consider something like that, if you can even do that.
My only concern, again, is that none of us have looked at it. I don't even know what the building looks like, I haven't seen it, and I don't know what to tell you, I don't know how to address it, because I haven't seen it.
Yes. I mean, time is an issue, uh, we, we would obviously submit, I could have all this submitted immediately, and we would just completely hold until, you know, you had approval on that.
You're not gonna get a, you're not gonna get a set, a plan stamped for large scale until we see this, one way or the other. If you want to approve it, subject to us reviewing it.
I request that you can approve it, subject to review of the elevation.
And if there are issues?
I mean, if there's variances that do come, come out of it, I mean, those will have to come back as far as the next meeting. I think that's the biggest concern, is, is that if there are variances that do come into play.
Then I have to come back and get them. Uh, you know, like, is there a five-foot sidewalk along the length of the building?
Yes, that-
Is there foundation landscaping? Is there outdoor storage? Is it screened? Does the facade have over 100 feet in length? And it has to have wall projections, and the wall projections have to be a certain kind. What are the building materials? What are the roof lines?
When, when I got the, uh, when I got the information back from the architect on that, I was under the impression that he had submitted that directly to you, and he had not, but we've acknowledged, he, when, when he acknowledged all that to me, uh, he had given me the approval that all that had been met.
So, meaning he addressed everything and everything is in compliance with what's on this list, is what you're saying?
Yes, ma'am.
By acknowledged, you mean it's taken care of? That's what you're assuming?
He, I actually, I can, I can get back and actually pull the, once I get you the elevations, I can actually get his, uh, report and the locations of all that information in the plans.
Okay, if we're gonna make the assumption that everything's okay, and if it's not, then they're not gonna get a signed set of plans until they either change their plans to include it or get a variance.
So, Chairman-
What is this that we have in our? What's all this?
That's what we have. We don't have any of, elevations of what the building looks like, there's nothing in here.
So, I asked Luke, he believes he has all of that information with him in his email. Is it possible to set him aside for a moment, move on through the doc, and let him come back and send that to Patsy? Well, e- even if he does, you're not gonna sit here and approve it right now on there. I mean, I, I totally agree with you.
No, I'm, I'm not asking her to approve it, I just know as far as him having it.
Yeah, I would rather you just go ahead and, and take action on it based on the fact that he's saying everything's been addressed, and then let us take the time to look at it. Because to sit here and look at it at the table is not fair to anybody.
No, no, I wouldn't suggest you look at it tonight, I wanted to make sure that he had it with him, that you could get it into your hands, because you need it.
Whether we get it tonight or tomorrow, if, if we don't have it, he can't get a, a stamp saying the plans to be forward until we get it, or he comes back and get a variance, if you want to do that. We just need the community to understand, you need to submit elevations with it so that it comes to us, so we can look at it, that's the problem.
I think that there was a little bit of confusion that I reported earlier when I was filling out the large-scale development plan for the city, and that we had submitted everything for approval for the permits, which included all that information. And then when we were requesting the site plan to come for the large-scale development, we believed that was the only thing that was required. Then, when I got the report back today that said the elevations were required, I knew that it was too late to submit them for you to review them for tonight, so.
But your technical plat-
We have approved, I mean, we, I have, well, actually, I can confirm that I've walked through the plan with the architect to address all those statements, uh, that you read off to me.
Because you got a set of comments from us, from technical plat, that said you had to address all those.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
And then you responded that said they were acknowledged.
Yes.
But we don't know how they were acknowledged, that's the communication gap we had, yeah.
Brian, you had something? Okay.
We're trying to hold it up, it's just that we haven't seen it.
Any other questions or comments from the audience? I, I'll, I'll make this comment as far as, and even to myself on here. On these packets that are sent out, uh, we've gotta really look at these things in detail, because, I mean, we're consistently seeing a lot of these large scales, and if, if there's something you don't see as far as a drawing, I mean, if they're not showing a visual representation of the business and so forth on here, that's in the packet, we need to make sure that we're calling that out and letting the, the planning department know. we're calling that out and letting the, the planning department know. Uh, and again, I, I point that finger back at myself as well, so, um, just a correction going forward in, in that whole piece. I don't want this to be a precedence going forward, I just want to make sure that that's on the record as well. Um, but, um, yeah, I would, I would recommend that we still hear this and, and vote on it. Um, obviously, that's why we have on here motion, subject to staff comments, uh, this is going to have to have their final stamp as far as approval, and just understand if there are any variances whatsoever, that's still going to hold you up and, and will require as far as coming back next month at the earliest, uh, in order to, to get those final things passed, and that's-
Okay.
Okay?
I think that, just from my perspective, I submit these all over the state, and, and I was, when we were submitting this packet, I guess the, uh, I, I may even mention that there was a little bit of confusion because I got a lot of emails from a lot of places, and I have, I probably have sent it-
Yeah.
Not to the right place, thinking that I was responding to the correct response.
Yeah, that's fine.
Because I know I've sent the, the, I know I've sent the elevations at least ten times.
There's ownership on both sides.
And, and that's, that's, uh, I mean, obviously, that was my fault, but-
Yeah, and there's ownership on both sides.
Did you assume, because it was in Harbor Meadows, you didn't have to do a large scale?
Well, I definitely submitted everything to Harbor Meadows, no, I didn't assume that. Uh, but when I, I, I talked to Debbie about this, when I, when I got my comments back, I also got about four other emails from different, uh, from different people, uh, within the city, I guess, and I've responded to those individually. And I have those emails.
Do you know what other, were you getting comments back on the building plans?
I was getting individual comments from different emails instead of, and that's actually the comment that I made to Debbie, instead of one document where I could respond to everything, I didn't know to respond to the separate emails or the individual email, which-
The fire department, he was corresponding with the, the fire department sent some stuff in.
There was others besides-
Okay, okay.
When we look at these-
Well, we don't normally get building plans being submitted, uh, well, sometimes we do, I guess, we get them all submitted at the same time, not, not always, but, yeah.
When we, when we look at this, it needs to be, large scales are the ones that should have elevations every time, right?
Right, you should always have elevations.
Okay, I know, there's just, there, we've got plat, you know, there's different, I just want to make sure we're looking at the right-
I can table it, not let it on the agenda at all, I thought we'd give this one a chance to, to move forward and give us a chance to work it out.
Sometimes they're here, you know, even between when the packet goes out and when we get here, so sometimes we just assume that, you know, I think I, myself, they'll just be here, so, but if that's, we, we can definitely do that.
The other side of it is, you guys haven't done anything in Springdale before.
That's right.
And it's a little bit different if you're an out-of-state company. If you're a local Northwest engineering engineer that knows the process and you don't submit them, that's a different story. And we have gone over this over and over and over and over with some of them, and we still don't get them, and, okay? Anybody paying attention out there?
So, on your second location, no that, okay.
That was my sermon for the day, sorry.
So, this be a motion?
Do we start with concept of-
Well, we're told that-
Oh, that's gone away, that's gone away.
Motion to approve, subject to staff comments.
Motion by Mrs. Haney?
Second.
Second by Mr. Covert.
Donato?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Large scale passes eight zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, L seventeen dash seventeen, Waterstone Counseling Center, west side of South Forty-Eighth Street, north of Levine, concept of detention presented by Blue and Associates. And I believe the concept of detention is not necessary, is that correct, Ryan?
No, there was a, yeah, there was one, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Sorry, I didn't know who Ryan was, so. Um, we're just doing an officeplex, this is right next to the Marketplace Express on Forty-Eighth, uh, pretty close to the Holiday Inn. Um, we are looking at building one building right now, uh, we've provided the parking in the front and the back, um, believe we have elevations, we should have elevations, I know that the front one was turned in, and we had a rear elevation that should have been turned in, so, should have everything you need in order to be able to do on, work on this one.
Clayton, have we had elevations on this one? I can't hear you.
He says he doesn't.
Okay, because on your responses, again, it says, when we get to commercial design under, design standards, it says understood. What does understood mean? First comment, front side and rear elevations are required, elevation shall include type and color of materials used, and the response is understood.
Well, they should have been turned in.
I have a stormwater management plan.
Can I forward this to Clayton for him to put up on the screen, or you want me to pass my phone around, or?
Well, here we go again, that we haven't had a chance to look at them, so, I don't think it's fair to have to make that design issues at the table. If you want to do this one the same as the last one, fine, if you will give me instructions to don't put them on the agenda, if I don't have elevations by the time we get here, I'll take them all.
Yes, I would like to make that recommendation.
I would agree with that, too.
Okay. You want to let this one go, that's fine, but from now on, if we don't have elevations resubmitted with resubmission, that means you don't get on the agenda, okay?
I'm good with that.
Okay.
Okay. Any other comments?
My only comment is-
Uh, front, just from-
Oh, for her.
Okay, I still have some other ones. Uh, Haney Camp Ram shall be provided wherever across sidewalk crosses a curb, landscape islands are required at rate of one per fifteen parking spaces, streetlights are required at intersections in a long street at intervals of three hundred to three hundred and fifty feet, need show dumpster locations, all comments from the utility companies and other city departments must be addressed prior to approval, and all residential, commercial, and industrial developments submitted after August thirty, two thousand and seven, are utility lines, utility wires, lines, and/or cable in said development utilized by electric and/or telecommunication companies shall be placed underground excluding twelve KV and above, development must comply with commercial design standards, um, need to note that modified curb is required at the drives in a modified curb detail, uh, submit a preliminary drainage report, need clarification where the pond is, that the post onsite to pond is flowing, too, as noted in the stormwater management system heading of the drainage report, no pond was found in the general vicinity of the project, would also need clarification, the report is stating that the drainage well located approximately three hundred feet south of the property is decreasing the flow by one point CFS or less through the hundred-year storm, and need the drainage report to engineering as a PDF.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission? Debbie, you had?
Yeah, my, my comment on all, all of these without the elevations, I had planned to vote no, I pl, I voted yes on the last one only because they had not worked in Springdale before. And that's my only comment.
Okay.
And I'll make a motion to approve, subject to staff comments.
Is there any other comments?
Do we, I'll tip it.
Uh, that, there's no need for the concept on that. Take that one off.
That was right.
So, motion by Mrs. Haney?
Second.
Second by Mr. Covert. And again, this is subject to staff comments, especially the elevations and so forth, so.
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
No.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Donato?
Yes.
Large scale passes seven one. Thank you. Next section, Board of Adjustments, B seventeen dash twenty-five, Arturo Martinez, eighteen thirty-seven Reed Lane, variance for reduction of lot width from seventy feet to twenty-two point three-one feet, presented by Arturo Martinez.
We're the Martinez's, and we're here to answer any questions you have.
Okay, you're creating two lots, the one lot along the, the street that has eighteen, uh, whatever that number is up there? Eighteen thirty-three, okay? That, that's to create one lot for that house, and all the rest of it is to remain a second lot, but it only has frontage at the street itself of twenty, whatever, twenty-two feet. If we set a setback line at the area where it is seventy foot in frontage, then you don't have to have a variance, except, and your buildings fit right at that line. If we set the frontage actually at this location, Clayton, can you put this drawing up, too? Okay. We went back and looked at this, this has been really confusing all the way through, so, it, it's hard to grant a variance for that much of a reduction in a lot width of a, of a lot on a public street, but if we set the setback based on where it meets the seventy foot, then your buildings can be no closer than they are today, and you don't need a variance then.
Actually, that was the problem, you know, um, when we first buy eighteen thirty-three, we build a house on eighteen thirty-seven, and the bank, I have to refinance, and the bank put the two lots together. So, when I hire my surveyor, I told him, you know, that I want to just separate those, separate those lots again, so we can have that, but I don't know why he went and did that reduction.
Okay.
So.
We, we haven't really been able to figure out what's going on with all this, but I think this would create a situation where you don't have a variance as long as the buildings are never built any closer to that second line. Your thirty-foot setback from the seventy-foot width would put it right at the edge of those buildings. That's acceptable, and, and this is what your surveyor will show on his survey, and we don't have to do anything else. And this should take care of your bank, having two separate lots, but there's no variance needed. It just took us a while to get to the point to figure out what we were trying to do.
Do we need to take that to our surveyor and have him modify the?
Is that acceptable?
Yeah.
Okay. You can take my copy, I can get another one. Okay, then we don't need to take action on this, on this variance, we just took care of the issue.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next item, B seventeen dash twenty-six, Dennis and Laura Joy, four thirty-two Chantilly Avenue, reduction of rear setback from twenty feet to thirteen feet, reduction of side setback from eight feet to four feet, presented by Dennis Joy.
Yep, good evening, my name is Dennis Joy, I live at four thirty-two Chantilly. I am asking for a seven-foot variance from the back, which would take it from twenty to thirteen, and a four-foot variance on the side, which would take it from eight to a four-foot, uh, setback. Um, the reasoning is I'm wanting to put a, a small pool in there, I'm working with a commercial pool builder. I have had the, uh, utilities all located, I will not be building anything permanent over top of the utilities, um, I'm going to be staying about three foot away from the nearest utility with the pool, so, um-
Okay, the question is, three foot away from where the line is actually located, or three foot away from the edge of the utility easement? Clayton, did you get a chance to check this one? Okay, because if there is a utility easement that is plotted on the lot, you can't encroach upon that utility easement unless you have written verification from all of the property, and maybe Mike knows.
Okay, I'm not familiar with that, the easement.
I believe that's correct, I believe it's just a kid put on the back, so, being thirteen foot, it should be good.
Okay, okay, that would be the only other thing that we need to make sure, that you're not encroaching on a utility easement itself, and as long as they stayed inside where they were supposed to, we'll go back and check that. You can approve this if there is a utility easement there, it'll have to be vacated before you can actually get us permit for it, if there, if we find one.
Is that something I need to check, then, the utility easement?
Well, I don't know if, if Clayton had a chance to check it today or not, they'll check it in the morning.
Okay, now he's called down there.
Yeah, we'll let you know, well, I'd call later in the day, not first thing in the morning.
Anything else?
No.
Any questions or comments from the audience? Yes, sir, go ahead.
On, on one of the narrow ends, you show the pool in a little drawing that we have, and it looks like you're showing the pool four feet to the property line, is there any decking that's going to go there?
I'm going to put some composite decking, like, two foot, and it'll be removable, I'm going to set it on the concrete, uh, deck, uh, posts, there won't be anything buried in the ground there.
Nothing buried, but then the, the pool would be four feet away, but the decking that you have, then be two feet away from the property line, is that correct?
Yeah, if, if I'm going to put decking there, I wouldn't have to, um, I want the decking on the other side where my house is at, I could leave that side without decking if I needed to, so, but I was planning on putting two-foot composite decking around the deck.
And Clayton said there were no easements, so you're, you're okay as far as this goes.
Okay, good.
So, you're actually going to be two foot from the property line, not four feet if you're going to put that deck out there?
Yeah, yeah, and it's not going to be a permanent deck, and I wouldn't have put one there if, if, uh, I don't plan on, I can plant shrubs over there and landscape it. My main side is where my deck is, over on the side of my house, that's where I want my deck at, for, you know, where I'll have pool furniture and what have you.
But, yeah, the, the main thing that I've seen is, down the road, people forget, and then they try to put a covered deck in over the pool area or pool deck area, then that's not allowed, so, I'm just mentioning it right now because we've had several come back after the fact, and they assumed that they could do that, so.
Okay.
So, leave it at the, uh, four foot?
No, leave it at the four foot.
I'm fine with that, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the commission?
That, that, that four foot is to the pool, right?
Yes.
And that's what we're saying, that we're, we're going for the four foot to the pool, and you're not going to put decking on that side?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. It's basically four foot from any structure whatsoever as far as whether it's, uh, pool decking or the actual pool itself.
Yep, I'll landscape it, yeah.
Yep. Okay. All right.
Call for the vote?
Call for the vote, call for the vote by Mrs. Haney?
Are you all taking both of them?
I'll take both of them together.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Donato?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Adjustments pass eight zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next item, B seventeen dash twenty-seven, Juan Rodriguez, twenty-nine fifteen Beaver Creek Street, variance for increase of height of fence in rear from six feet to eight feet, presented by Maria Rodriguez.
Name's Judith Torres, I'm, I work in the planning office, and I'll be translating from Mr. Rodriguez, so he's asking for a variance to, um, fence in his backyard, and he, his house actually sits on the highest part of his property, so it slopes down towards the street, so a six-foot fence would not cover the back of his house enough, so he's asking for an additional two foot of cement blocks on the bottom, and then the six-foot wood fence on top, and he's provided pictures.
Okay, staff comments?
How close to the, I mean, let me back up, it's on the, on Orchard Street side of the property, correct?
Sorry. It's Orchard, yes, it's the side-facing Orchard.
Okay, and is he taking it to the corner of the house?
He's taking it to the corner.
My only concern is it may create a, a vision problem when you go around the corner if, because he is on the corner, if it's that close to the corner.
Okay, if he has to, I guess, shorten the height around the corner, he could also do that.
So-
He's just mainly wanting to cover kind of the back Orchard, but if he, if he has to change the height of the fence on Orchard, the corner, he can also do that.
My understanding is going from the back of the house up to the edge of the house, parallel to Orchard Street.
Clayton, can you put your cursor on there so we can see what we're, what we're talking about? Okay, that side is closed, on the other side, do you want the fence to be the same distance on the other side along Orchard Street, or do you want it between the two houses?
It would, um, go between, I guess? It would cover his, his neighbors?
Okay.
I'm not quite sure.
See, I think, that's where we're confused.
Okay.
So, it's going to go here?
Do you want to do, I can do that part?
Yes.
This arm doesn't work that well.
Right here?
Yes.
To the edge of the house?
And then go up to the house this way?
Is that what you want to do?
Right there.
Okay.
Right there to the Orchard, Orchard side.
So, anything on this side?
None, none on the other side.
Just here and here?
Yes.
Okay, that makes more sense.
So, that's not going to create a side distance from there?
I thought we were going all the way down the side on Orchard, all the way to the front of the house.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, that makes sense then.
And that's decorative stone, not just block that you're wanting to put on the bottom?
Yeah, two feet.
Okay.
Yeah, because I need to make level on the side of the yard.
Right, I just wanted to make sure it was more decorative stone and not just plain industrial block. And that's what your picture shows in there, I just wanted to make sure that's...
I guess he was... That was what he was planning on using, what is shown in the...
That's fine, I just wanted to make sure...
He has to switch to, yes.
Yeah. Yeah, I saw it as far as...
Okay.
But I assume that that's what you were planning on doing, but I just wanted to make sure we address that on here.
Yes.
The deck sits very high. I don't think that the fence is gonna make any difference at all. I would recommend, instead of going with a variance on the fence, that you put some trees or shrubs or something that grows up high to give yourself the privacy, because the fence will not do it.
I don't build that way, I don't going to have privacy. It's why I need to make two feet on the bottom.
But your deck is very high already, and the fence is not gonna cover... An eight-foot fence is not gonna cover that, and that changes the whole look of that neighborhood to put that high of a fence.
It's no neighbor right there on the back where I'm going to build, it's no neighbor, no. It's the front yard of the neighbor.
You will see it driving down the street on a corner lot.
Well, I don't going to build all the way on the front, you know? They're going to have a lot of room to see on the right.
Technically, would he be... As is, would he be allowed to, like you thought previously, go all the way down Orchard? Would that...
If you agree to variance for that, that's all, in a place you can put the eight foot...
No, I'm just saying, me personally, I think that if he's saying he's just gonna go to the back corner and then to the back of his house, that's a much better...
Oh, yeah.
Than him going, if he could, go all the way down to Orchard. I'm much more in favor of that, because then the neighbor too, it only kind of goes to kind of level with the front of their house.
A little bit jog out. If you look at this picture on here, you can see there'd be a little bit of... And it comes all the way out to the edge of his house instead of where the backup fence is over here.
Yeah, yeah.
Because it looks like the edge of their house, their fence comes... Right there?
Yeah.
He's gonna go all the way out to the edge of his house.
On the backside half is built already. I'm going to build on the right side, the other half.
So you're gonna have...
It's normal fence.
So you're gonna have a fence that comes like straight across and then is gonna drop up high and come across the rest of the way is the visual side that you will see driving into the neighborhood. And we've had that in other neighborhoods where someone has added two feet to a fence.
Oh, yeah.
And the change in fence line does not look good in the neighborhood. When you're, you know, when you're looking at the visual effect of coming, driving into the neighborhood.
Usually they're tacking onto the top of the fence and putting...
It doesn't matter, it's the height. It's coming and having something that sits like this and then seeing a piece that comes like this next to it down the rest of the way. Would you want that in your neighborhood?
The fence in the back, is it already six foot?
I think the neighbor going to be happy about that.
Yes, sorry, go ahead.
I don't think they don't have any problem, the neighbor.
But landscaping could go up.
Yeah, go ahead.
Not about Mr. Rodriguez's concern in particular, but in general. We've really frowned on eight-foot fences in the past. Community engagement and Misha has spoken to us a number of times about their inability to see or gauge any activity or anything that goes on when you have an eight-foot fence. So just a reminder, we have had this issue before, and in general, we have said no. Not about this particular case, just in general.
But technically, he's gonna have a six-foot fence on a two-foot wall. Gonna have a six-foot fence.
Yeah, that's right.
Just elevated two feet of the block.
It's just gonna be elevated with a structure underneath it.
Just because of the topography of the land?
So is that considered fence? Or is that considered...
That's creating an eight-foot fence.
Well, it's creating an eight-foot... It's creating a six-foot fence on top of a two-foot structure, so...
Well, the block itself, I mean, you're talking different materials.
You could have a retaining wall, he could... You know, there could have been a retaining wall built back here.
He could level out his lot.
And he could level it out. And he could put a six-foot fence on top of that. If he levels out his lot, he still gets the right to put up a six-foot fence, right?
Correct.
But he's not leveling his lot, he's just putting...
He's just putting in a structure.
Well, that would be the only other concern I would have as far as putting a landscape block in there like that or any kind of block. You're gonna mess with the drainage as far as that lots, and you could cause an undue burden to some of the other property owners. Hence trenching of water coming in excess in that whole area. Because instead of a sheet of water coming, you're actually...
No. No.
Because you're actually gonna potentially create a pool of water in that whole location, so...
Well, if he builds up two foot, then he's gonna have a two foot on his side. So when he puts that two foot...
Yeah.
Back there, are you gonna fill, backfill it?
Yeah.
And have dirt up on top, so what's gonna run out underneath the fence is gonna actually come over the block? So we're not accidentally, we're not accidentally creating more water, we're just creating a waterfall.
The water still goes that direction.
The water still goes the same way, the same amount of water's gonna go the same way, it's just gonna fall over the top of the structure.
Down a little bit better or at the bottom of the wall than it is when it's...
Any other questions or comments on this? Should be a call for the vote?
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote by Mr. Powell.
Compton?
No.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
No.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
No.
Fanato?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Passes five-three. Next item, B seventeen dash twenty-eight, Crafton Toll, Tyson Heights, north side of Don Tyson Parkway between Spring Haven and Serenity. Variance for reduction of front setback from thirty feet to twenty-five feet on lots seventy-one, seventy-six through seventy-nine. Variance for reduction of front setback thirty feet to twenty feet on lot seventy-two's through seventy-five, presented by Crafton Toll.
Good evening, my name is Daniel Ellis with Crafton Toll and Associates. This is... We just finished up construction out there at Tyson Heights, Phase One, and we didn't realize it when we were putting the plans together. There's a large acreage of land that drains from the north side of it into the lots that we're talking about here. We have, according to the new drainage standards and grading standards for residential subdivision, we have to put in a rear drainage way behind there, and there was not a way to put a culvert in, because it's just sheet draining those backyards. Once we got out there and looked at it, we realized that those lots that are mentioned in our variance request do not have a backyard, it's all a ditch. And so we're asking for just the ten-foot reduction on the four lots that are where the ditch is the largest, to give them a little bit of a backyard, and then five foot kind of as we move out from that on four lots on the west side and two lots on the east side, just so there's some backyard and that house is not backed right up to a ditch, and when you step out the back door, you're stepping into a drainage ditch. And that's actually the final plat.
Comments?
So you're saying there's no other way to deal with this but to reduce the front setbacks?
Yes, ma'am. There's not a way, because all the water on the north side is sheet draining onto the entire north property line into just a common drainage ditch, and there's no way to put culverts in there or catch basins or anything like that, and to adequately catch that runoff from offside.
Well, I don't have a problem with the ones that are thirty to twenty-five. The thirty to twenty is gonna be a problem because of the parking situation. You and I talked about this.
Yes, ma'am, we sure did.
You know, when you start shorting that front setback, you don't have room to park cars in the driveway. And we have issues with cars parked in the yard, parked in the street, because the driveway is too narrow. There's no way to... These houses all have garages, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
But there's no way to keep those where those garages are being used as garages.
We have a similar situation like this in Harbor Meadows, since you come down Fifty-Sixth Street and you see it. They have the backyard right there at the top of the drainage, there was no variance required, or they didn't come for it.
They just don't have any backyard.
Not backyard, so it's known up front.
Did we, on this Tyson Heights, did we already see a variance request for setbacks at some point?
Yes.
We had some because of the...
Of the Fayetteville water main. We had to reduce the side setbacks a little bit because the water main from Beaver Lake Water...
It was just the side?
Yeah, it was just the side on a few lots, like six of them.
We've got pretty small lots out here, and now we're creating, you know, we could've taken out one lot and made the lots a little wider, and we talked about that as a possibility, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, we talked... I made that suggestion that maybe we should make the lots a little wider, and that way that we could have a little bit different style, but this is what they came and asked for. Twenty feet, twenty-foot front setback is pretty short.
They came the first time and wanted to make smaller lots, and we didn't allow that. Then they came back, made the lots a little bit bigger, but then asked for some of them to be made smaller, to put more on there. Then you came back with the water line...
Yeah. You're... It wasn't a variance on the setback, yeah.
I feel like you were told no, and you're still trying to squeeze more on there than you should have from the start.
I mean, we've got, most of the lots are seventy feet wide or wider than what's required by code. We really didn't anticipate this issue. I didn't, when I was engineering this, I didn't pick up on that. I just visited with the developer. We're fine with all of them, just a five-foot reduction if we can do that, and we'll change our request for the ten-foot reduction to the five-foot reduction on all of them.
So how big does that make the backyard if you go with just five foot?
On the four that we were asking for, the ten-foot, it'll give them about a five-foot backyard off the back of the buildable area.
And option B, if these setbacks are not approved?
No backyard, basically.
Well, they have a backyard, it just says...
It's just a ditch.
How deep is the ditch?
At the worst, at the worst spot, it's about four feet deep.
The other option would be to get an easement from the property owner on the north and ditch that direction centering on the property line rather than all of these lots. Would you all look at that as an option?
No, ma'am, we did not pursue that.
So what did this ditch look like during this last flood event?
It actually worked as it was designed.
But there's no houses out there.
There's no houses, you know, there's no houses out there, but it is raw, gray.
It's raw ground.
It's raw ground, so it's gonna sheet off.
Kind of gives you some kind of soul.
Yeah, but it carried all, and really the ditch captures all the water from the north, which is still pasture land or actually a tree farm, and it captured the water and conveyed it on down to the south as it was supposed to.
So will there be any water added to it?
No, not really. The lots that are, the lots that this ditch is sitting in the back of, they all drain to the front towards the street.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Okay, any other questions or comments? To the commission? The only comment that I would make is, is that we've had something similar to this as far as the last meeting off Silent Grove Road, where we've had a multitude of different setbacks and variances to that, and just, I'm just bringing that up because we did not approve those on there, so...
That's right, and a different style of house could be made to take up less space or... I don't know what your houses look like, but...
Some people may not want a backyard, you never know.
Okay.
Call for the vote?
Call for the vote by Mrs. Haney.
Okay, yes, they are.
You were changing that to a five foot on all of them?
Yes, ma'am. Why don't, do you wanna hand them all together or separate?
Well, he's changing it to the only request is a five foot.
It'll be from thirty to twenty-five.
But on both, A and B will only be a five foot...
Reduction, yes.
Reduction.
Covert?
No.
Haney?
No.
Parker?
No.
Parsley?
No.
Fanato?
Yes.
Powell?
No.
Tyler?
No.
Compton?
No.
This does not pass, seven to one. Thank you.
Read courses through the court system.
Thank you. Next section, waivers, W seventeen dash zero-nine, David Alderson, East Emma Avenue, Fourplex, East and West, waiver of street improvements to East Emma, presented by McClellan Consulting Engineers. Other?
Evening, Mr. Chair, thank you. We're here to request a waiver of the improvements along East Emma Avenue for the two properties located on either side of the intersection of Emma and Aaron Place. These lots were originally created by plat in two thousand and four, they were then zoned C-two. More recently, they were rezoned from C-two to MF-four. And again, we're requesting a waiver for the, for the street improvements due to hardship, and I'd like for Mr. Alderson to comment to that.
Can you state your name for the record as well?
I'm sorry, sir, Nathan Street with McClellan Engineers.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir.
My name's David Alderson, I'm a property owner, so if you have any questions for me?
Staff comments?
When you bought these lots, were you told that the plat that was filed with the subdivision says that Lot One and Lot Sixteen owner will improve East Emma Avenue when Lots One and Sixteen are developed? I mean, that's the filed plat for the subdivision.
Yeah.
Because the developer, when he did the rest of it, didn't want to do the street improvements, so he put that condition on those two lots, were you told?
No, ma'am.
I don't know how we grant a waiver to something that's recorded on the plat. I guess, Sarah, are you willing to talk about this?
I mean, I'd have to do further research. I think it could be done, but it would require a little bit extra action on what we would have to do after the fact, if that makes sense, so that would have to be rerecorded. So I think it could be done, but it wouldn't just be an up and down vote.
I mean, and I guess my problem is, this was discussed when we did the subdivision, that's why that note was put on the plat, so that the street improvements would be done. When they got to that, and it's unfortunate that you were sold those lots without being told that that's recorded on the plat, did you get a copy of the plat when you bought?
Uh, no, ma'am.
Would that not also be recorded on his deed?
Well, I would think so.
Sarah?
It might be a good idea to discuss this with my office and let me do a little bit of research and recommend kind of a course of action from a city standpoint on this. That would be my preference, and that's certainly up to the commission though, and up to the property owner.
So table this, potential table letter?
Well, this is a waiver request that goes to the city council, and Vivi and I talked about it the other day. You can send it to council and let them decide what to do with it, and then...
Absolutely, and I'd like to speak with you, with the council meeting, though.
And then that gives us time to do that research and figure out what can happen. They may have to come back and replat those lots. I don't know, but if...
So there's no legal concern from our standpoint that we move it forward knowing that the plat says that?
You gotta send it forward with no recommendation.
Absolutely, yeah, you can make any recommendation that you see fit on that.
Or send it forward with no recommendation, let the council determine.
Yeah, I mean, I would, my preference would be to send it forward to council with the recommendation that it not be approved, because I feel like they're putting... I mean, when we approve that type of thing, and now you're gonna ask the rest of the citizens to pay for the price of the street, that should have been either parceled out to all of those lots, or the lot price should have been reduced to cover the improvements that they would have to make. I mean, at some point, some lots are less buildable because of issues like this, and what happens is time passes and eventually...
So I agree with you, but in fairness to this citizen, if he truly was not told that, then they need to be able to do the research on the backside to say, hey, look, the person just wasn't told, it's not on his deed, he had no way of knowing. I agree with what you're saying. I'm just saying, my position would be to move it forward to council with no, with no opinion, let them have time to research it and make that call.
Yeah, I mean, either way, the council will make the decision they want. I just feel like it's setting even then a precedence that we're moving it forward...
And overriding what's written already.
And, and, you know, and I think that there's, you know, people should do due diligence when they're... I mean, it's not like it wasn't written anywhere.
Well, that's why I wondered how it missed the deed as well. That would be very surprising that it missed on all three pieces.
Basically, what I hear from you is, is that they don't necessarily have to be heard at all on this, it can just go straight to city council.
They can go straight to council. It has to come here first, but you could forward it to them without a recommendation because it's not clear. My concern is if we approve subdivisions in the future with restrictions on lots, and then, this was filed in two thousand and five, and not to say this is your fault, but if we record it with a lot, that ought to be picked up somewhere, don't come back to us and ask us to change it because somebody didn't tell you. That creates a precedent that's hard to deal with, because we've done this on several of them that made deed restrictions or restrictions on the lots, and nothing's changed as far as the conditions.
I mean, whenever we make these changes and we tell people, you know that the size of your building doesn't have the parking for anything else, it's gonna be hard to sell. The next person who buys it comes to our table and asks for a waiver, well, you know, we want to do this and we can't because, you know, we bought this property and it is the way it is. Well, you know, at some point, if the court is gonna, when someone appeals this to the when someone appeals this to the court level, if we let these things slide, then we lose any ability down the road. So that's my reason for forwarding it with a note, with a recommendation for a no, and then city council will do what the city council does, that's their choice, but.
But it'll give them time to research this legally.
Right, but I don't, I don't feel comfortable sending it forward for recommendation, or even as a, you know, knowing what I know right now, I would recommend that they vote no, that would, I would want to move it, now, nobody has to second that, but I'm gonna make that motion that it move forward with a no recommendation to the city council.
I can support that based on the fact that you want to hold precedent to what's already recorded, so, that makes sense.
I'll second it.
Dale, you second it?
Yes. So we have a recommendation for
Deny the waiver.
To deny the waiver. And that has been made by Mrs. Haney. And seconded as well by, sorry Dale, by Mr. Tyler.
You seconded it?
Dale Tyler.
Dale Tyler.